This is the agenda of the regular board meeting of trustees, president, board of trustees, village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Today is March tenth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, I will ask for clerk to call.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Clayber?
Here.
Make your form as president, could we stand for the president, please? Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, Mr. Garcia. Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Are there any approval corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting that was held on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty? And corrections to be made to the minutes? Any corrections to be made to the minutes? I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion for approval by trustee Cap, we need a second to approve the minutes.
A second.
Second by trustee Bonner, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes, motion passed, minutes approved. Before we open the meeting to the public, if anyone has anything to say to the board, if you can just stand up and give us your name and your reason for addressing the board. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Motion for approval by trustee Clayber, we need a second, please.
A second.
Second by trustee Bonner, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
A motion passed, meeting is now open to the public, so if you have anything to say, please give your name. Try to keep your comment for three minutes. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion for approval by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public, could we have a second, please?
Say.
Second by, I'll second by trustee Clayber, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, motion passed, meeting is now closed to the public, thank you. But I'd just like to say that the property tax bill, the first installment will do hard first, you know, which I'm sure that everyone has paid that. Any exemptions that would be granted, it would be given only second installment, which is due always the first. So, whoever then who have those coming, just look forward to them. On Saturday, I attended the mayor, the South suburban mayor black caucus meeting in Moncom. And Robert Rose from the Cook County Land Bank attended. And the land bank was working with all the communities of Cook County and tried to help to eliminate the plight of vacant houses in the community. So, they will be working with us and give us a list of what the properties are. Some of them we know that they're vacant, we just don't know whether the Cook County Land Bank actually have access to them or not. So, also, the South suburban land bank has also been working with us some way. So, we're gonna continue to work because we get every individual house in the village of Burnham occupied and get it back on the tax roll. Thank you. And clerk Lewis?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just another reminder still that early voting began March second. And early voting is through March second through March sixteenth. If you'd like to early vote here in your resident of Burnham, the nearest location would be Kellyman City Library. And then, uh...
Clerk Lewis for that report. Public education, health, safety and welfare, trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the hiring of Mr. Tyree Houston
as a part-time police officer for the village of Burnham. Once he has fully completed and passed the testing, that's the polygraph, the medical, the drug test, the psychological and background.
Okay, Mr. Houston is here, so give her the standard, introduce yourself and give us a background and just tell her why you feel you'd be an asset to the village of Burnham.
Good evening, my name is Tyree Houston. I'm a resident of Chicago, Illinois, born and raised. I currently work for Chicago Public Schools, safety and safety and security, emergency response team. I think I'd be a great asset to the village of Burnham. Just off my experience alone, just dealing with community and high school kids and grammar school kids. And just building relationships with the community as well as the department. I just feel like I'd be a great team player. I'm willing to learn as much as possible. I'm loyal and I'm committed to just being a good citizen, just period, so that's about it.
Before that, a question?
I've been in CPS.
Oh, fourteen years.
Yeah, fourteen years.
Why do you want to work in this industry?
This industry, just been, first of all, a black male in Chicago, period. And just seeing more people like myself doing this job and just being able to continue to grow as a man and have someone young look up to me as well. And being able to see a positive influence in their own community is a set of, you know, things like that.
Are you easily influenced by others?
Easily influenced, no. My superiors, I like to listen, I like to learn. So, that's the type of influence that I have been. Yes, I'm influenced by positive education, people that's gonna educate me to do my job to the best of my ability.
Do you aspire to be a full-time police officer one day?
Oh, absolutely. I think the overall goal is to be a full-time, but taking the baby steps and to see if this is something that'd be fit for myself and my family. It's always good to start at the bottom and then work my way up.
That's wonderful. Your thoughts are really great and your reasoning for your occupation is really, really great, very commendable. And I'm sure you've already had your interview process, so I'll skip that part. I'm sure you're gonna be a great asset to the department and to the community and you're going to be serving a very great community. We have some really wonderful people here in Burnham. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I thank you very much. See you, trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve on the hiring of Mr. Tyree Houston as a part-time police officer for the village of Burnham. Once he has fully completed and passed the testing, that's the polygraph, medical, drug test, psychological and the background test.
Okay, so trustee Greer has made a motion to the board to approve the part-time hiring office, I mean, of Mr. Tyron Houston to become an officer for the Burnham Police Department, so we need a second, please.
A second.
Second by trustee Cap, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes, our motion passed, you belong to us now. I see trustee Garcia. I guess it's a defense.
Okay. Participated in a briefing on Friday, March sixth. It was a briefing with Governor Pritzker on the coronavirus. As you know, this is an ongoing investigation to determine more about this outbreak. This is a rapidly evolving situation and information will be updated as it becomes available. And as it becomes available, we will pass it on to you, our community. So, people ask, how is it spread? Mainly from person to person. It can be spreaded between people who are in close contact with one another, within six feet. It can be spreaded through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can land in your mouth, or the nose of people that are nearby. Or the droplets may be inhaled into the lungs. So, how many times have you been around people that are coughing, sneezing, and they're not putting their hands over their mouth? So, this is very, very important. And a lot of times, I know I was, I used to work with a person, always coughing and sneezing, never putting their hands over their mouth. And so, that's not good. So, just remind people and actually ask them, this is your health. Most symptoms are fever, tiredness and dry cough. Some people may experience aches and pains, congestion, runny nose, sore throat, or even diarrhea. But the most important part of all is to clean your hands regularly. After using the bathroom, before eating, after eating, cooking, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. In any case, wash your hands for at least twenty seconds. A lot of times, people put their hands under the water and that's it. But you need to wash your hands for twenty seconds.
Trying not to touch your face, is it?
Right. Stay aware of all the latest information because as you know, you turn TV on, you turn the radio on and this is all that you're hearing now. Always take precautions. Clean your hands daily. Avoid touching your eyes, nose and your mouth. Above all, if you're sick, not feeling well, stay home. People over the age of sixty need to be very careful. Try to avoid large crowds of people that have health conditions. Several other, most, several other insurance companies now are saying that you're covered. If you would like to have a testing, most insurance companies will cover that. But make sure you have ample supply of medication, food and supplies in case that you have to be quarantined. And the question is not if, it's when. So, again, you should keep supplies in your home just in case you have to be quarantined for some reason and none of us know. Water, medication, food, et cetera. Again, as we hear more about this virus, we certainly will pass it on to you, our community members, thank you.
And in addition to that, we did have a link put on one of the websites so the residents can access that and get some of this information. So, a lot of information, you know, people have already heard about it on television, so let me come and get a little bit more of it on, 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 I think. Now, thank you, trustee Greer.
You're welcome.
Public Works and Village, trustee Clayber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I only have a few things. Public Works has been doing a general cleaning throughout the village. And also, the equipment for the upcoming spring and summer season has been cleaned and serviced and in pretty good shape, ready to work. And also, National Public Works Week this year is May seventeenth through the twenty-third. And we'll be working on a few items for that. That's all I have.
What about the ellies? How soon do you think you could get to them?
We're working on them today. Try to work with them, they work a lot better when I'm driving, so, but we've still been working.
One by me is really bad, but it's probably a winter thing.
And I would also like to put some cold patch in those holes.
Yeah.
And thank you, trustee Clayber, for ordering the lotion and plan, and trustee Garcia?
Good evening. Good discussion of consideration and taking action to approve or not approve resolution number twenty twenty R zero zero one. A resolution for authorizing the execution of the Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program, twenty twenty program year, application for the village of Burnham.
Okay, Dave, could you explain that a little bit to the board before we...
Yes, Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds are federal funds that are distributed by the Cook County. So, there are eligible areas as determined by census results. So, when the census comes, they take all of the mostly income information and areas that have low to moderate income levels then become eligible for CDBG. So, right now in Burnham, everywhere east of Torrance is eligible. In the past decade or so, CDBG funds have gone down year to year, just throughout the whole country. So, the grants themselves have been more and more competitive. So, for a long time, Burnham was funded every year. This time, I don't think we've been funded in three years. So, I think we have a really good chance of getting funded. So, the last project we did, we did the sewer lining on Saginaw. I think it was hundred forty-second, hundred forty-third block?
No, hundred forty-first.
Okay. So, the reason why that treat is so bad is because there were problems with the sewer that was letting sand in, causing all those big potholes. Now that the sewer has been lined, now we can reconstruct that pavement. And potholes should not come back because the sewer was previously lined in, I think, twenty eighteen. So, this resolution authorizes the village to apply for those funds, which are due on Friday. So, that's about it.
The board has a question.
So, this is authorizing for us to apply for, the applications due on Friday?
Yes.
Okay, uh, records and engineers working with clerk's office on that, or that's already been done?
Well, they put it like, put the mechanics together, you know, so...
The quote for it?
Yeah.
And how much, for this amount, how much of the streets will be done?
We're going for two blocks, the two blocks that were lined.
Just Saginaw?
Yep, yep. We usually get around a hundred thousand, so that's just about right for two blocks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. See, it's up there.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty R zero zero one. A resolution authorizing the execution of the Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program, twenty twenty program year application for the village of Burnham.
So, there's a motion for approval by trustee Garcia to approve this resolution, so we need a second, please.
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Motion passed and you read the second one, and Dave to explain that.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve resolution number twenty twenty R zero zero two. A resolution of support, invest in Cook grant application, Cook County Department of Transportation and highways, call for projects FY twenty twenty for the village of Burnham.
And at this part, I'm also gonna have Dave to explain this. Village was contacted by Cook County the other day, so, and if we apply for the fund, there are no guarantees that we'll get the funds. But if we apply for it anyway, these funds will actually be for a walking path that would connect with the bike trail. And that would be Cal Sag, would that be correct?
Correct.
Yes. And that would be up on the west side of Torrance, right?
Correct.
And you can explain it for us.
As you're probably aware, the village of Burnham is kind of in a unique position with the Burnham Greenway from the south, the lakefront trail to the north. I know we have that gap. And then, the Cal Sag Trail coming from the east. So, you're really, for the Chicago area, you're like the center of numerous trails that come together. What those don't have is kind of a recreational path. So, what the mayor was thinking was to, there's the vacant lots on the west side of Torrance, right around a hundred forty-fifth, a hundred forty-fourth over there. So, we would connect to the Cal Sag Path and make a nice little leisurely loop around those lots and then go back to Blackburn Park. So, that's the project that we're gonna submit. Invest in Cook, a couple of years ago, the county, they realized that their MFT funds, they had a nice surplus. So, they, for years, they had only allowed the use of their MFT funds on county routes. So, kind of streets that they owned and maintained, they had a surplus, so they decided they're gonna start distributing some of this money to the local agencies. So, you're actually using the county's MFT funds for your use. So, I think this is the fourth or fifth year of that program. This, just like the CDBG, this resolution authorizes the village to submit that application and for the mayor to sign the application.
There's a question from the board.
Is there a set amount or are you just telling what you want and then they'll either approve it or deny it?
Well, that probably would be put up with the engineer once you have finished your analysis.
Right, I haven't gotten to that point yet since we just really were petitioned by the county last Wednesday, I think, to get this going. So, we worked on the scoping earlier this week. I was out there today to take some pictures for the application. So, tomorrow, I'm gonna start writing the application itself and at that point, I will put together the cost estimate.
Will that, will that be so easy for us, Jim?
Well, that probably would not be part of it, probably would, probably would, you know, try to get a pavilion, you know, down at somewhere, I'm about to turn that around. So, if it was in summertime, you know, they'd wanna sit down and, you know, in the shade or something like that, so. But, a vegetable probably would not be able to, is it just...
So, where are you gonna go from where and where, like from State to Torrance?
I'm not sure there's enough vacant lots to get down all the way to State Street. So, we would go to where the end of, I think there's a, I don't know if it's like a three flat or some type of multifamily right at a hundred forty-fifth there. So, we would go just to the end of that, which would, I mean, I guess it sets the stage to eventually come further south because we'd wanna say, these people coming on the bike path, you know, we'd wanna get them to the village's central business district, which would be the strip malls at this time. So, that would kind of be a long-term plan, but I don't think that's quite possible yet.
And that little bit, that little shed that we don't own, that's something that probably would not be...
Yeah, we'll probably have to stop there.
Okay.
I make a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty R zero zero two. A resolution of support, invest in Cook grant application, Cook County Department of Transportation and highways, call for projects FY twenty twenty for the village of Burnham.
There's a motion for approval by trustee Garcia to approve this resolution, so could we have a second, please?
A second.
Second by trustee Bonner, clerk take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Our motion passed, thank you. If you have anything else, trustee. Thank you, trustee Garcia. I have nothing tonight.
David, why you got David now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have nothing.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we got our village engineer here. And another project that he is working on with me and the mayor is the, what we call the cottage park, storm water reclamation or improvements. I've got the draft of the resolution for you, I gotta leave it with you. But if you wanna stand up and, we've been working on a model agreement or verbiage on an agreement that I think you sent yesterday to Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, after we reviewed it and worked out some language. And we gotta wait for them to come back to finalize the agreement. But they wanted a resolution, I haven't, I've got the draft of it, but we're not presenting it tonight. And it's to improve the park down on Cottage Park, I got the address of it. But it's one of these kiddie parks where it keeps flooding. If you wanna stand up and address that too, while we got you here, I don't want you to bring it back another day.
Yes, you can go briefly, but in the near future, we'll do that PowerPoint presentation, so we can show it back.
Correct.
We're gonna have to give a brief announcement up tonight.
Yeah, I think a couple of months ago, I might have mentioned that we were awarded that project. So, we're now in the stages of providing information to MWRD so that they can prepare an intergovernmental agreement. So, that's what the draft is. That agreement will just allow the village to construct the improvements to the park using MWRD's funding. So, they seem to think in the next month or so, we'll have a final, so that will come before the board for approval. The project is to use some grading, some what they call bioswales, some natural plantings to try to get that water to, one, go where it's not interfering with the play lots or the basketball courts or the field where people wanna play. Get that storm water into a designated area and then the natural plantings, the wetland plantings, will help absorb that water so that it dries up faster. One, it makes the park usable again. Two, it does that without sending that storm water to the sewer system, which then, you know, flows down to a hundred thirtieth of the plant and has to get treated because Burnham is a combined sewer area. So, it is a environmentally friendly project as well.
Thank you. I wanted to bring it up to the board, let you know it's in the works. But they got like a six-month period there that they can get back to us with the actual finalized version of the contract, we submit our information to them.
All right, thank you. And so, trustee Cap, you said you didn't have anything to finance right there.
David? This will be for you, I know.
I'll get it every round for a while.
Public Utilities, trustee Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As of today, we have had eight hundred and twenty-eight water meters installed. We're doing very good. And ComEd, last week, March second through the sixth, was National Consumer Protection Week. And ComEd sent out a scam alert to help people identify scams that are targeted towards people. So... This is what you should know. That ComEd would never come to your home or business to sell you electricity, ask for immediate payment with a prepaid cash card or ask for your account number, social security number or tax identification number or to see your energy bill. They say be wary of people asking for those items. So, if you feel that someone is at your home and you can, there's a number you can call to verify that they are ComEd employees. It's a eight-hundred number that we will list out in the best of view area. But just be wary because since twenty seventeen, there has been a sixty percent increase in people scamming residents with the electricity. So, to be careful and be alert.
And for the record, ComEd does not do that.
No.
For the record. Thank you, trustee. Park and Recreation, trustee Bonner?
No, for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bonner. During the presentation, the petition, communication, memorials, what I'd like to announce, we lost two other residents. Ms. Florax and Mr. Moria passed on Saturday, so we could ask for a moment of silence for them, please. All right, thank you. Is that a new business? I mean, unfinished business? Is that a new business? Motion, you're gonna make a motion. Okay, motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we could go into executive session. And I would also like to include Dewayne Liddell into the executive session since he maintains the public works. And again, according to state law, if we're into executive session, we have to, in the fact, we cannot do it in public when we're discussing disciplinary, discharge, employing, or whatever case might be, so... Now, that's what, do we need to read these?
You can combine all three at one time.
The purposes are going into executive session and then somebody, or should, someone in our trustee should make the motion to go into executive session, have it seconded and then voted on. Take that, trustee.
I make a motion to go into closing session for a recent wide request for closed session, discussion of minutes likely closed, whether for purposes of approval of the minutes or a semi annual review of the minutes. Two, IL, five ILCS, one twenty dash two, for litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the village has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the board finds an action is probable. I make a motion to go into closing executive session for reason one, request for closed session, discussion of minutes likely closed, by the course of purposes of approval of the minutes, or the semi-annual review of the minutes, two, IL, five ILCS, one twenty dash two, for litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the village has been filed and is pending before a court, or administrative tribunal, or when the board finds an action is probable or imminent, and three, five ICL, ILCS, one twenty dash two, for appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal, uh, specific employees of the public body or legal counsel, I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, clerk take your own.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, we are now going to executive session, so if you'll come back and, 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 yeah.